Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krasnick?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here. The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Everyone please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with our dock hearing. Channel Marine Construction, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Warren.
Yes.
Sir, would you state your name for the record?
Frank Bowen.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
So, I'm here today for the, one second, 104th Street property. 423 104th Street, they're building a new home there. They have an approved plan and permit to put in a new fixed pier, ramp, and floating dock, which is slightly different than what's there now. And I think that's why I'm here in front of Mayor and Council, because there's a change. So, it's been approved by the state and it's similar to what was there, but it's no longer and it doesn't stick out into the channel or block the neighbors in any way. So, it's kind of cut and dry what's going on there. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions? Frank?
So, the square dock's going and it's all going to be?
It's all straight. It's a six-by-36 fixed pier to a ramp and then it's a six-by-24 floating dock, just all straight out. Because it's a narrow lot at the end there, it's pie-shaped.
Anybody having questions for Frank?
No.
Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak for or against this application at 423 104th Street? Seeing no one, I need a motion to approve the dock application at 423 104th Street.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? You're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have any communications?
No, Mayor.
We will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address Mayor and Council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. I will ask that the gentlemen from the Army Corps have been waiting for questions specifically addressing the beach, the sand replenishment, beach replenishment project that they talked about. There was the one gentleman that did have a question. Has he since left? Would you like to ask your question now? Come on up. Thank you for waiting.
My name is Joe Mauer and I live at 10510 First Avenue here in Stone Harbor. And a question that I really had was of the dune project, was it sounds like what they're doing is they're not going to reduce the size of the dunes that are closest to the homes, but what they're going to do is take the dunes that have built up on the ocean side of it and cut that away. And I was just trying to get a clarification on that. Is that what everybody?
Is his observation correct, Chris?
Oh, there you are, over there.
Yes.
And the other thing is, I think I came over here on a question. Is the objective in order to get more beach area? Because why would you take away from dunes that have grown up and bigger for protection from, you know, storms and stuff like?
So, is what motivating the project to increase the, I guess, the width of the beaches or to maintain the dune or both? What's motivating this pilot project?
Or the management of the stand within the system? Not to increase or manage to potentially resign to increase the width of the beach to look material here in the dunes while trying not to compromise to design that for the future.
Okay.
Okay. So, and just just for clarification though, you got bigger dunes and twice as much and you think that's going to give the same protection as the original design of the dunes, which was now closer to the bulkhead?
I don't know if it was going to give the same exact level.
Because that question came up, I think, from over here.
I don't believe it's going to give the same exact level of protection. What we were trying to do was manage to stand within a system where we have some access to try to put in areas where sufficient as the waves can run to be not having, maybe more than a ten company, but we would have.
Well, I think if Council agrees with that, I mean, that's fine, but that was my comment. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir, and again, thanks for waiting. Oh, I thought you were, are you coming to the podium about the beach?
No, I'm at the beach.
Okay. Just because anybody who has any questions specifically for that project, so these gentlemen can be on their way, they don't want to sit through the rest of our council meeting, I'm sure, up till the second public comment. So, if there's anybody out there that has a comment or a question concerning this dune project. All right. Thank you. You're welcome to stay. But thank you very much for coming. Thank you for the presentation and the information and we'll be in touch. Okay, so, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to address Mayor and Council may do so by coming forward to the microphone, stating your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Harris, 8315 Sunset Drive. I've appeared before Council in October of 2017 and again in June of 2018, requesting a change in the ordinance that would allow Stone Harbor Bayfront property owners who also rent a trailer storage slot be allowed, once they remove their trailer, to place their floating dock in that slot sometime after Labor Day. There's a, appears to be a couple new members, so can I kind of summarize my reading?
Yeah. Did you guys receive a summary?
Yes.
Has everybody received a summary? That Mr. Harris has been before us and I think we had planned to make some changes to the ordinance, but never did.
I'll take the hit on that.
Okay.
Suzanne sent the minutes out. When I read them, I saw that I said that I would look into that and we'll try to get it straightened out and I didn't. My apologies, but I will look into it now and see what, I mean, I can't make that decision myself. I'll tell you what, my one concern is that once your floating dock is there and somebody sees it, there's going to be multiple floating docks there, want to go in there. I don't think the borough as a whole wants to see that happen, so I need to get together with the Public Works Director and go over it.
Well, could I?
Sure, now go ahead. Yep.
So, 2013 and 2014, I did get permission from various people in Borough Hall to place it there and I don't think there were any more docks. And I must confess, after the meeting in June of 18, I heard Mr. Krasnick and Mr. Parsick both say it made common sense. I also heard Mrs. Lynn say, and this is a quote, "Let's give it a try and if we get 100 complaints, we'll have to do it again." I asked at the end of the meeting, after Labor Day, and the mayor said yes. I mistook that as we were trying to see if there was going to be an issue. So, last Labor Day, 2018, I moved my floating dock into my trailer slot again. I heard nothing the entire season. So, we now have three years of history of no complaints. I would just appreciate, we're trying to protect the neighborhood. As you know, my floating dock and my neighbor's floating dock seriously damaged our neighbor's homes. And we've had, five out of the last seven years, we've had severe weather in September, October, including this September, when several floating docks broke loose, several pilings were broken and a couple boats were broken off their ropes. Luckily, my dock was not one of them because my dock was damaged in the April 17 storm of this year and so it's sitting in my driveway and I'm repairing it now. You know, the role of, I'm involved in municipal government, my own community, and one of the responsibilities of municipal government is to protect the community. I'm just asking you to make a change that would help protect certain neighborhoods. And Mr. Krasnick said, "We don't want 110 floating docks sitting in people's driveways, not only because it's unsightly, but also you have 110 potential floating bombs in a community." Over there, there isn't anybody, there isn't any homes. The only people that can see those floating docks are the third floor of a couple condominiums and they're looking over top of the storage facility for Public Works. So, they have 12 months of looking at it. And the Public Works storage area is very neat, but it's still a construction zone, which looks no worse than a few floating docks. As I testified before, I think there's two or possibly three people who have a bayfront house that also rent a trailer slot. So, you have the potential for three floating docks to be there. There shouldn't be any more.
And at this point, they're permitted November 15 through April 15 as it is. So, basically, what you're suggesting is we extend that to immediately after Labor Day?
Correct.
Okay. So, that is something to consider. And we can talk with Grant. Do you see issue with it, anything in particular? And then, as Mr. Harris said, anybody familiar with any complaints we've received in the three years that his dock was there?
My only concern would be the other trailers that are in the area. Right now, they're starting to weed out, so there's space to move around and to place docks. But if all the trailer spaces are taken, then there's not going to be a lot of room to move around.
My floating dock is smaller than my trailer space. It's only seven foot wide.
How do you transport it?
It's by front-end loader from the ramp where it's floated to and then it's transported up and just like the 110 that will be done the same way after November 15.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so it's an ordinance change that we can continue to discuss and consider. We're at October 1st now. So, right now, if we said to you, "Go ahead and do it," it violates our ordinance?
It's a matter of enforcement.
Right. I don't have a vote, we all know that.
Let's have a fourth trial. Have a fourth year of trial and see.
He's done it before. I mean, I certainly, I dropped the ball on this, but I don't have any objection to doing that. Grant's okay with it, there's enough room now. Let's just do it and then we'll look at the ordinance and...
Okay.
And the chief heard us, right?
And we'll look at actually changing the ordinance? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tom Gallagher and I live at 8001 Second Avenue, Unit 207. It's the Golden Shores Condos. I'm here on three matters. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Borough Administrator for taking care of a problem we had at the basketball courts in the beginning of the season. The courts are now posted to tell individuals when the lights go off, it's time to go home. Not sure what they were thinking. I also wanted to compliment the police fire and the rescue squads. My condo looks out on the baseball fields and we had three medical emergencies airlifted out of that location during the summer. I was, I'm also in municipal government. I was a township commissioner for years and one of my areas was the firearm, public safety. And to see what these ladies and gentlemen do for your community and for the residents and for the individuals who visit here on at least those three occasions that I saw was phenomenal, but I just wanted to pass that along to you. Now, my third item. I would ask you to take into consideration during your budget hearings, paving between 80th and 81st Street on Second Avenue. It is a mess. There is elevations there. I would ask that your engineer or your Public Works individuals go out there. The gas company did whatever work they did and it was paved in the spring of 2018. And what they did is that when they paved, they didn't pave properly around the manhole. So, you have a flip into the manhole going north and then when the paving stops as you approach 80th Street, the elevation goes down again. And the gentleman with the landscaping trucks make it very difficult to live there. It's a matter of just smoothing it out. I realize you have budgetary considerations. I'm asking that you just put it on somewhere for the future and it would be north and south because it's pretty noisy. But other than that, I would like to thank you for everything you do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council?
Good afternoon. Patty DiMarco, 364 93rd Street. I just have a question for clarification on the isolated lots. When Ray was describing non-conforming, previously non-conforming before September 16th and all that, we had a lot of duplexes that would have been conforming duplexes at the time that were then non-conforming duplexes after we enlarged the lot sizes. When Ray discussed now tearing down and being allowed to rebuild, am I to understand that that is just a single-family house that can be rebuilt in those locations? Because when you read the other statement and the statement that was removed from the ordinance, that clearly indicated you could not replace the non-conforming structure on this lot, but his description now sounded as though you might be able to put anything back that was there.
It's my understanding it has to be conforming.
But conforming to what?
Conforming to all the present zoning.
In which case, it could not be a duplex if it doesn't?
Correct. That's my understanding.
That's correct. It's a buildable lot, but it has to conform in all other respects.
And all, right.
But it's buildable, it's not that you can't touch it again.
And I think that was the original intent of the ordinance at the time anyway.
Exactly.
It was never, I was on the planning board at that time and no one, no one wanted a 50-foot lot to be considered an undersized lot or not a buildable lot. But I think in the description of what I heard today and in reading it, it does leave it open for discussion and I just merely wanted to make sure that we are saying "single family" and maybe that could be just like relooked at again.
Right. Get it in the language, you mean, to make sure that it isn't open to interpretation.
Real clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council?
I have little packets.
Thank you.
Don't forget your name and address for the record.
Bernadette Parsick, 9925 Sunset Drive. Well, let's try this again, the Smugglers Cove issue. I hope it's not over. And two weeks ago, when we were here, Frank, some of your comments led me to think to myself, "I wonder if these council people have ever been in Smugglers Cove." You mentioned that you were amazed when you found the marina section and how big it was, so I'm not sure how often you go down to that whole area. So, for the record, I'd like to go over the attributes of Smugglers Cove. Last month, when many people stood up and talked about Smugglers Cove, they talked about the history of preserving a really historic building, one of Stone Harbor's historic buildings. It was built in 1935. It has a little breastplate from the museum. It's 1935. And these pictures are in a book that I bought off of Amazon. And it was originally called Guyan's Pier. And in 1970, I think '73, Mr. Bachman bought it and changed the name to Smugglers Cove. A lot of the talk a couple weeks ago was all about the history of Stone Harbor and nostalgia and I don't think that you were moved by that at all. A lot of emotional stuff. So, I'd just like to go over, what is the present-day Smugglers Cove? Today, not '35 or '73 or '84, but today, it's the hub of fishing and boating activity in Stone Harbor. It's on a relatively small lot. It's only a 90 by 90-foot lot. And some of the attributes of this tiny little, relatively small lot, it's the only marine facility on the island that sells gas to boats. There's three, there's three gas pumps. There's three underground gas tanks. I understand the gas tanks have been all checked out. They're fine, they're not leaking, they're fine. Smugglers Cove rents small boats. Small little boats, maybe they're 14 feet long with a little motor, so if people want to come down for the week and spend a day fishing, they can just come and rent a little boat. And you see grandfathers with grandchildren, two older men, two younger men, they, and you see them out in the back bay in the Smugglers Cove boats. And I think there's about a dozen of the boats. There's a very long, six-foot by 80-foot floating dock at Smugglers Cove. An 80-foot floating dock, it's huge and it's placed beyond the bulkhead, about 25 to 30 feet out. So, it creates a little water section that, that's where the small boats are kept. And this long 80-foot dock is kind of out enough into the waterway that when boats, no matter what size they are, come in, they can easily pull right up to the dock and get gas. And multiple boats can do that because the floating dock is so long. It's a bait and tackle shop where everybody buys bait. That's where you buy bait, at Smugglers Cove. For seasoned fishermen, I'm not one, but I understand, it's the hub of social knowledge. It's where are they catching them today and what are they catching them? It's, there's a camaraderie, there's a community there. For novice fishermen, they come in and they can find out what kind of bait to buy and they'll help you put the bait on the hook. They'll sell you the hook, they'll sell you a little fishing rod. On the dock side, the dock side is packed with things that are kind of strewn all over bigger marinas, but there's a wench, there's an auxiliary building, there's a picturesque little bench that says it's the lying bench. I got a kick out of that when I saw it. And there's a weighing station. There used to be a coffee shop there, a place to get lunch, breakfast. There's plenty of room out on the deck that could be recreated. The second floor is existing, a four-bedroom, I believe, three-bath, large apartment. I think it's where Mr. Bachman lived. It's been mentioned that that could be other uses. It has a big, big deck out on the bayside, could make it a BYOB restaurant. Someone mentioned it could be a newly-formed Stone Harbor Fishing Club, it could be their headquarters. And then, there's a third-floor apartment. I think it's two bedrooms, one bath. And then, there's the proximity to the Stone Harbor Public Fishing Pier. Now, that's located, if you've not been there, it's located all the way down 83rd Street, past Smugglers Cove, three properties down, there's this magnificent fishing pier. It's, the pier itself, where you stand, there's, it's about 18 feet in depth and 75 feet and the pier sits out about 42 feet over the channel. When I was there looking at the pictures yesterday, there were five or six people. There's a little fishing. And there's a little parking lot there. There were, there are seven parking slips or car parking slips and five of them were taken. And then, there's a handicapped parking. So, in this small little 90 by 90-foot lot is a functional marina, full of utility, packed with utility. There's gas pumps, three gas pumps, underground fuel tanks, small boat rentals, it's a community fishing hub. It's a support for the people who go down and fish, especially the vacationers. There could be a probable breakfast, lunch cafe on the bay and there's two residential lots with an array of commercial purposes. The property is set in the business zone. And then, there's the proximity to the public fishing pier. Beyond all of this, Smugglers Cove is grandfathered in. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that you couldn't build there now that are, that it's all grandfathered in. It's permitted and it's legal. Frank, you were absolutely amazed where, at the marina across the basin and you said, "Just think what $7 million could put there." Well, what could you put there? If you tried to get permits for the gas tanks underground, I do not believe you would get them. I believe now, that close to the water with this, with the high water level that we have, I don't believe that you could get permits for underwater gas tanks. I took pictures of the gas tanks, if you're following in this, my picture, my pile of pictures here, what the gas tanks look like at the marinas in Cape May County. There was one that I found had underground tanks, but most of them had, which I'm sure are grandfathered in. They're all above ground and even at Stone Harbor Marina, they have over, they have, they have gas tanks that are sitting on the land and they have put these fences around. But the fences, the fence is huge. It's six feet tall and it's 21 by 33 feet. That's a, that's a big area. And if we want to develop that marina area across to put all of these attributes that the Smugglers Cove had, it's very industrial. It's an industrial kind of a look. It's not pretty. The prettiest part of a marina are the boats kind of floating up and down, but all this other stuff, it's, it's, I don't know if it's what you're envisioning, Josie, if you're envisioning a restaurant there. Let me see where I am here. But if you, if you wanted to try it, try and get permits for underground gas tanks. The floating docks that they... The floating docks that they allow now, I thought were eight by twenty. I'm told that the DEP now is pushing for six by twenty. The gas, or the, the floating dock at Smuggler's Cove is eighty feet long. You would never replicate that, never. And the configuration of, of the basin, it seems to me that the bigger boats would have a hard time turning around and, and it's going to displace a number of the boat slips that are there. If you, if you want to have small boat rental, there's more displacement of more, more existing boat slips. And would the borough lease this service to run it, to run small boat rentals? Would borough workers rent the gas, rent, rent the slips or rent the boats and, and, and pump the gas? We have to think about this if we really think that we're going to try and replicate across the basin. Sure, you can build a bait and tackle store, but not with the original cachet of Smuggler's Cove. A restaurant, you could have a beautiful restaurant there, no doubt. But I've heard about restaurants, the big money is made when you have a liquor license. And I don't know of a liquor, you can't, you, I don't think you're allowed to have a liquor license in that spot. And, and what would we do? Would we build the restaurant and then lease it out? Would we give a lease to a restaurateur and have him build? And he would run the restaurant there? I think that it's a nice idea to have a lobster house-like restaurant there. But I don't think that any of us have a fairy godmother, godmother wand that we can just make it appear. There's so much permitting required on anything that's on the water. So is there a plan for any of this? Does anybody have, have you thought about a plan? Have you thought about a plan, Josie? Have you thought about why you don't want this Smuggler's Cove there so badly? The borough owns a lot of land, a massive amount of land. Our most important land, of course, is the beach. We guard the beach. We clean the beach. We remove the trash. We groom the beach. We monitor the dunes. I guess we are thinking of moving the sand around on the beach. And sometimes we replenish the beach. We love the beach. We're a beach town. But we're an island and we're also a bay town. Remember, I haven't heard mentioned the three Bs recently, beach, bay, and business, business district. But we used to hear that a lot. Stone Harbor owns land that's environmentally restricted. The Bird Sanctuary, the Point, the Back Bays, Sedge Island. And then we own, and we, and we spend money and effort on those, not as much as on the beach, but we do. We, and we dredge the, the basins. We own useful parcels that we use for parking lots and all kinds of pumping stations. I think there's something on the agenda today about a pumping station. We own massive recreational areas that support children's playgrounds, tennis, pickleball, basketball, soccer, baseball, bocce ball. We support fishermen via the public fishing pier. And we support boaters who need docking and a way to launch their boats. I am here to ask for more support for our fishermen and boaters by purchasing Smuggler's Cove and making it part of the marine recreation area. It adds dimension to the experience here in Stone Harbor. It's always good to add dimension. We're not one-dimensional people. If what you're concerned about is the cost, the loss of ratables, let's look at the massive amount of land that is already owned by the borough and used for recreation. The fishing thing is a recreation. It's a form of recreation. Well, we've got a lot of recreation land. And let's really focus on the recreation land at Eightieth Street. After you put in the paper streets, the whole, you could divide up that, that property into forty-five, sixty or more lots, sixty-foot lots. Some of them would have to be seventy-fives. The present value, and this is probably conservative, of those lots is about seventy-five million. That is, that's a lot of ratable. And then when people start building the fancy houses on them, you can add a third, forty percent on for the dwelling. That, that's a lot of ratables that we are giving up to have that big recreation, multiple blocks. The tennis courts in that recreation center, or that recreation takes up a fifth, a fifth of the whole parcel of land. So we support tennis and pickleball with fifteen million dollars' worth of land value. Fifteen million dollars on tennis. That's a lot of ratables. Now, all we're asking for is the equivalent of three tennis courts to support the boaters and the fishermen. And I've got nothing against tennis or pickleball. I wish I played either one of them. I don't. And I don't fish either. But there's a lot of other land there. There's a soccer field. There's a baseball diamond. And then there may be some other parts in between that aren't really used for much of anything. I, I know there used to be a skateboard park there. I think that's been dismantled. It's a lot of land that's little-used. But if we wouldn't want to touch that recreation field, let's look at public works. The assorted value of the public works that I can pick up, sixty-foot lots divided into single-family home properties, it's about thirty-four million. Perhaps we could find some disposable land there. The obvious disposable land, there's two of them. There's that dusty lot between Eightieth and Eighty-first. I know the Lions used to have, the, the Stone Harbor Lions used to have their barbecue dinners there, but the Stone Harbor Lions have disbanded. So I don't know what we're doing with that now. I know we use it as a staging area at times, but when we have to have a staging area, maybe we could use the soccer field. And then there's the L-shaped lot. That lot is assessed at two million, four hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. I say sell the isolated L-shaped lot and make a plan for the rest of the area. Let's get creative. Let's take a page out of the nun's book. They looked at that big tract of land and they decided that maybe they don't need to own all that land. And maybe they need to choose what's important and let go of the rest. We'll get more ratables there. Maybe we can consolidate public works. Just let's think about it creatively. Let's make a plan. But don't let Smuggler's Cove go before we have a plan and before we have the permits in place to replace it. It's too important, an issue to too many people in this town. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address mayor and council?
Julian Moralia, eighteen thirty-seven Paradise Drive. I'm not going to say anything that's the same as what Bernadette just said. I will pick up on one piece because one of the problems that I have been told I have is that I don't understand the word "no." And that's pretty true. I don't understand that word many times. But the second piece is that one of the councilmen, and you all got copies of the letter, so I don't have to tell you what it is specifically. And I'll make this brief so that it doesn't get boring. He said that you, he went before counsel and expressed his opinion that the purchase of Smuggler's Cove was foolish. He didn't say in the letter what his basis for that comment was, so I don't know how he came to that conclusion. Secondly, he said, "Many respondents from the Shippoa questionnaire," if you will, "expressed the belief that they needed more information, needed more information, particularly on the cost and risk elements." Did you receive any comments from people in writing or requests from people in writing? Anybody? No. So we don't know exactly what information they were looking for because they didn't write it down, so we couldn't respond to it. In another sector, he said, "The council meeting on September the third and the Shippoa annual meeting provided ample opportunity for the public to speak and register their views, both pro and con." Two points. I was at that meeting and I heard at least five or six people on the pro side. And I believe there were two on the no side. But that's not what this letter says. In fact, the five or six people who were on the pro side for purchasing it were obviously ignored based on the vote that took place two weeks ago. Our poor CFO must have been given some instruction to develop a business plan, I'm guessing, or a pro forma or a profit and loss statement or something. Because, again, in this letter, the CFO determined the Smuggler's Cove proposition to be a, a loss. A, I'm trying to look for the exact terms that were used, but it was a, "money-losing proposition." That's the quote. So in response to those comments, what I did was go back to, to thinking. Now Bunny brought up a whole bunch of information. Like I said, I would not repeat with one exception. Part of the argument from people is, "We don't want to go out and borrow any money. We have enough debt in this borough." The facts are, we don't have enough debt in the sense that we are permitted to have fifty million dollars' worth of debt right here in the borough. I don't know what the Water and Sewer Department is allowed in debt in the state of New Jersey. But I do know that the Water and Sewer Department alone, if you decided to sell it, and you can, and there are public companies who would buy the whole system, would pay you somewhere between thirty and fifty million dollars. That'll take care of a lot of debt doing that. Also take care of all grants problems. Give you a lot of time to breathe. However, I don't expect you to do that. And if I were still sitting up there, I wouldn't do it unless there was an absolute need. But let's go back to that little L-shaped lot. And let's go to Smuggler's Cove. Let's break Smuggler's Cove in half, meaning that it's already two separate parcels of ground. There are two assessments. There are two deeds. It's not one piece of ground. Let's ignore the piece on the south side, which is the parking lot. The value, as stated by Bernadette, for the corner was two point five million dollars, based on our assessment. I dare say that you, the right price for Smuggler's building and lot, the ninety-by-ninety piece, might be close to two and a half million dollars. Our counsel, our solicitor, knows that inside the Internal Revenue Service Code, there is a special real estate area where you can swap properties for no cash whatsoever, unless there's a disparity between the values of the properties. For no cash, we can swap, sorry. We should invite a discussion between the owners of Smuggler's and ourselves where we would simply swap the properties. They then have the freedom and the benefit of being able to sell off all three of those lots that are there. That's made up in three different lots, all assessed somewhere around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece or nine hundred. So they could sell one this year, one next year, one the year after that, spread out their capital gains tax. There's a value to them to do that. There is also another value, and that is, they don't have to go through the marketing process. They don't have to hire attorneys. They don't have to hire real estate brokers. They can make a deal that makes their life extremely simple and helps us to do all the things that Bernadette talked about. What are the borough? I'm sorry. I have your, a list called benefits. For the seller, I spoke about the no marketing and the fact that they can sell the three lots any way they wish, and it moves the process on. What they do with the back lot is entirely up to them. It also has a market value, I guess somewhere around one-four, one-five. But that's their problem and their lot. If we wish to buy it, we can certainly go out and borrow one point four million dollars. The question then becomes, oh, Jim's not here. The question becomes, how do we pay for that without harming our taxpayers? It's simple. This is an analysis based on fifty years of doing commercial real estate. If you don't believe me, I understand. But I dare say, I'm pretty close. Taking scenario A, we can get a thousand dollars a month for the third-floor apartment, which was described. We can get, or, yes, a thousand dollars a month, twelve thousand a year. For the second-floor apartment, we can get fifteen thousand a year. For the bait shop, somewhere around thirty thousand dollars a year. For the café, mentioned, fifteen. Gives you a total of seventy-two thousand dollars. I can give you another scenario that looks like this. We can get fourteen thousand for the second, third floor, twenty-four thousand for the second floor, thirty and fifteen. That gives you eighty-three thousand dollars of income. Match that, if you will, against the eight thousand dollars a year we're getting in taxes in this borough for Smuggler's Cove. One piece. I said, forget the other piece. The fact is that when you bring in that kind of money, and how do you do that, by the way? How you do that as a municipality, and this is a recommendation, is you go find somebody to lease the property from you for a sum that him, her, them manage it and make a profit and pay you an annual rent somewhere around forty- make a profit, and pay you an annual rent somewhere around $40,000. Now you heard me give you the parameters that I see, 72 to 83, and only paying you $40,000. Where does the rest go? Management. And 30% of that income would be necessary to maintain the structures, maintain the buildings, maintain all of the other parts of that place. So the real question is, why didn't you study it? Why didn't somebody come up with a, I'm sorry, find someone who could think like this? Why does the public have to provide this information? You said you had enough information. I respectfully disagree, sir. You didn't have enough information.
I disagree.
Pardon me?
I disagree.
You can disagree all you want.
You've been studying it for a year.
Hold it. This is not between you and me. I'm speaking to the public.
You've made it between you and me.
No. Hold it. Who sent this? Not me.
You sent a letter first, and my response to your letter is there. And you selectively chose how to use the letter against me.
I pass. Whatever you say.
Good. Pass.
Whatever you say. I'm giving you facts. You look for facts.
Your version of facts.
I'm giving this board facts. I'm trying to get you to understand that the intensity of the emotional aspects is strong, recognizable, and it has a broad base. And those of you who do not fish, who do not live on the bay, may not understand that. But there are 450 homeowners that live on that waterfront. And they know, live, and feel the value of it. I'm asking you to please be aware of that. The second part is, and I'll go to Josie's suggestion to using the other side, and I'm not going to repeat what Bernadette said. But the facts are, it's going to take three to five years to get permits, if you can get permits to do what she is requesting. And number two, more importantly, we have no plan. Hasn't even started. You haven't hired an engineer. You have not hired an architect. Nothing has been done. So, assume that you will do that in the future. And I have no objection to you attempting to do that. What do we do between now and three years or five years from now to fuel our boats, buy our bait, and enjoy an aspect of Stone Harbor which has a history and which brings vitality to this town? So, if you, solicitor, Mr. Solicitor, are able to negotiate a 1031 trade, take the property in without having expended $1, earn more dollars than you are currently earning on the taxes, the real estate taxes, in three years, if you decide to build this, sell the place. Now you will have an asset which you can sell to take the money from and put it in your new project. So there are many ways to look at this, and as I said, I understand what my business is, and I understand why I look at things differently than many people do who have not had the good experience of being in my business. I only ask you to do this. Give us the opportunity to go out and prove right or wrong. If the results come back and the answer is still "no," you got no argument from me. If the results are obvious and say it's better to do it this way, I respectfully ask you, give us the opportunity to prove that. The only way you can do that is to put this back on the agenda with the note that the purpose for going on to the agenda is to vote down the previous motion made by Mrs. Rich, bring up a new motion, and give us the opportunity to reopen this so we can study it.
Anyone else like to address mayor and council?
Got the long route up here. 216-100 Fifth Street. John, ready? I guess I look too simply at this thing, because I just sat through a really serious situation on the beach, what it costs us to redo this thing, where do we get sand. I've been through meetings where we have water mitigation, we've got pumping stations going on, we've got utility work we've got going on, we've got the lifesaving lifeguard station going on, and it keeps going. And when you start adding it all up, it's just beyond me to get my head locked around buying a business, no matter how long it's been here. I mean, what do we do with, I mean, let's line them up. Springer's, Ace Hardware, right? Put them on the list. Hoy's. I mean, do we just go down the list of things that have some emotional value to us, we just keep buying them up? I mean, I would think those guys would put themselves on the list if we were willing to go down this road. So now when you start looking at what all this cost is, and you start looking at, now Jim's not here, he did a, you know, he did that spreadsheet at the meeting, and you know, he's running out just five years' worth of $300,000 losses per year. I mean, taxpayers have to pay that. And sure, the land is worth something, but you have ongoing expenses on it. And I can't see wrapping around that we've got a budget that's proposed for 2019, that we service $4 million worth of debt on a $12 million budget, which is 30%, so before we even collect the taxes, the $4 million's gone because you got to do debt. We've got $36 million in total debt in the town, and sure, we can borrow more, but that's not the answer. Anybody's ever put anything on a credit card knows that, you know, that money's gone, and then when you get your paycheck, you got to pay the credit card off, you got nothing left again, so you go back to the credit card. So I think the four votes that happened two weeks ago were four council members that said to themselves, you know, "I'm here for fiscal responsibility for this town, I'm going to take the best interests of the town at heart, and I'm not going to spend money when I know I've got to borrow money down the road here for all these other projects to get involved in Smuggler's Cove." And for those that say, "Sell the L lot," I mean, they're the same people that say, you know, "Tear down Smuggler's Cove, we're going to get more condos, we don't want to be condo city." What do you think is going on the L lot when you sell that? That's exactly what's going to happen.
Yeah, but John, John, come on. Yeah. We understand that, but we're also trying to save something that's very important to many people in this town, although you don't want to recognize that.
Right.
So that idea, all it came up as a way to try to pull the cost down, put some ratable stuff, and make it more palatable to some people who are against.
Right.
That's all it is.
Okay.
You know? So, if you keep the L-shaped empty lot, put condos on Smuggler's Cove, either way you're going to get condos on that basin.
That's for sure. That's for sure.
All I'm saying is, let's put them on the L lot.
Right.
And save what we got, like Bunny had said, that's permitted, legal, and grandfathered.
Right. And it's plenty, and there are plenty of costs that we don't know. I mean, the cost that we know is five or six million or whatever. And we know that basin was dredged a few years ago, it had the worst contamination of all the, you know, areas that we had on the waterway.
But that's what we were trying to get in agreement to go ahead and find all that out when we were stopped.
Right.
There is, there's details out there we don't know that we need to find out.
Right. But I think.
But right now, we're dead in the water.
Right. But I think the four people that voted said, "It doesn't matter that you come down to do all that extra legwork, that we shouldn't be in the business of Smuggler's Cove." I think that's what I heard. So I mean, if it's still the case, then it doesn't get reversed.
If we develop a Marina district.
Excuse me?
If we develop a Marina lot and build a restaurant and remove a gas stock area, who's going to run those? Are we going to lease those out? Are we going to be landlords?
Well, you have.
I mean, that's one of the big criticisms I hear is, we're not supposed to be in the real estate business. We own hundreds of millions of pieces of dollars worth of real estate right now. We're already in the real estate business.
Right.
You know? We're already in the landlord business, so we don't want to be in the landlord business until we build a new restaurant, then we'll be in the landlord business. I mean, come on.
Well, all right. The Marina is already in your master plan. You've already approved it. It's been there 10 years, it's going on again.
All it is is a sentence in the master plan. There's no plan on paper of what we're going to do with it. But, you know, Julian was being, I believe Julian was being kind in saying, "Three to five years." I hope I live to see it developed in Marina District. In the meantime, let's not throw this valuable thing out the window. I know it means nothing to you, I get that. But there's a bunch of people in this room, I can't believe they're not standing up, that it means a lot to them. Let's not lose sight of that fact.
Right. I get the emotion of boaters. You need to service the boaters.
But you don't care.
Excuse me?
But you don't care.
I care, but not that much.
Same difference.
Yeah. There's different ways to get to it. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to settle that issue here. It's just the government is not good at getting into these kinds of things. And you start, you start going down the P and L that he did, I mean, that's without all the costs in there. There will be tax money, year on year, funding that place, and it's a bottomless pit, because nobody can come to the conclusion of how much it really is. Is it 5 million, 7 million, 10 million, 12 million?
We'll never know.
So at what cost?
We'll never know.
So at what cost?
You hit the nail on the head, John. We don't have the.
We don't know.
Is it an absolute no?
You hit the nail on the head.
At this point, we've got the four votes, right? We cannot continue to look into this. I mean, what, you're just going to stand there and continue to come up with questions? We can never answer because we got cut off at the knees. So.
Well, hold on, you just heard 45 minutes of questions. So now my.
No, we can't know. What I'm saying is, we'll never be able to answer any of these questions.
Okay. All right, so.
We won't be able to.
It's a done deal.
It's a done deal. Yes. It's a done deal.[1299.92][1299.92][applause]
If Smuggler's Cove is such a great. Is there, we're still in public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to address mayor and council?
Hi. For those of you who don't know me, Kat Lachlan, and I live at 1983rd Street and own several other properties here. My family's been here since 1937. Those of you who will know, J.S. Lachlan on 96th Street was started by my grandparents along with several other businesses. Some family members have even rented from my family. We're a longstanding community member. I'm a member of the Avalon Fishing Pier. I've supported it since I was in my mom's tummy, my brother, my kids, everyone. We don't go, but we support it. I have a D.O.A. rod and a pen reel. I don't use them. I do live line spot every now and then just to make my father happy, 78. Again, we've been here a long time. It is very upsetting, regardless of whether people are boaters and live on the bay or live on the beach like I do, or, we're a community. And business is very important. And part of business, and my family being here and able to have what we are blessed to have on this island, is the fact of what we did with that hard work in that business district. And I look at it and I say, "There's a real boating community, there's a lot of anglers, there is a whole nother community. It's not just a beach community. There's a lot of people who are out doing boot camp, running, biking. Everybody wants something. They want bike lanes, they want tennis courts, they want pickleball, they want to be able to see from the air." I think it's all great. I want everyone to have their own special place and special memories of Stone Harbor. And back in Smuggler's Cove, that community, regardless of whether you're a part of it, if you stop in there, they make you a part of it. And I think that whether or not we were going to do that, I am so disappointed with the leadership in our community that we would not have the notice and the opportunity to explore something that has historic value. This is not something that we're just evaluating and saying, "Oh, I'm just looking at this from one angle." The opposition that just spoke conceded that he wasn't certain. He just thought that the four people who voted thought that this was not a fiscally conservative way to be, but we don't have all the information, and we don't have all the numbers. I can't say whether I would vote either way. As an attorney, I look at this and I say, "I've done bayfronts for the last year, and some of them are appreciating at the rate of $600,000 in six months." So I know, looking on the bay and listening to what Bunny said about docks, and I do waterfront improvements all day long, looking at pre-purchase compliance assessments with Michael Lucy, and I say, "Wow, there's some significant value out there that really could never be replicated." I don't really know the revenue. I have a lot of rental properties. I look at rent roll, I look at budgets, I understand ratables. And I say, "What really could be on that property? And could we leverage this property to make our Marina that we do have or will construct in that whole area? Would we make it more valuable, having a pumping station, having bait and tackle, having that level of community? Will we bring more people in? Or will they get in their boats and say, 'Don't go to Stone Harbor, go down to Cape May. Boat your dock, you know, take your boat to the dock, and we'll get food there, and we'll do this here, and we'll stay down there for the day.'" I don't want people leaving Stone Harbor like I started in the beginning. Been here since 1937 with my family. I want people in this town. I want people to want to be in this town. I don't ever want to have anything fiscally irresponsible, but I can't say either way. Emotionally, are we all attached to Smuggler's Cove? Yes. Do I think we could leverage it into other things? We have great minds, we have a lot of very educated people in this town, we have a lot of very affluent people in this town. There's a lot of things we can do, but having governing that at the end of a meeting, sandbags the taxpayers who put you in your office is very distressing. It is not the community that my family came to, and it is not what we are about. So first of all, I'm embarrassed because everybody's watching this on TV and knows that this is embarrassing. I'm going to leave it at that. We should do something in meaningful ways with proper information and proper dialogues, not on thoughts and feelings. Didn't we learn that when we had the poll situation? Many of you saw me standing up and fighting and making certain that Ace Electric talked to everybody at the same time in the auditorium. And we moved the distribution polls so they didn't go down First Avenue and ruin it. Well, why can't we have a similar discourse about Smuggler's Cove? Why can't we get that type of information and have a meeting and have the taxpayers, who are going to be the ones that pay this, tell our elected officials, "We think this is a good idea," or "We don't think it's a good idea." If it comes out that it's not a good idea and we shouldn't do it, I'm certain everybody would say, "We explored it, we feel good about it, we let a historical area be taken away from us, but we understand why we did it." Not that at the end of a meeting, there was just a random vote with nobody, it was so upsetting that the entire council wasn't the collaborative team that I hoped that you would be, leading a community that I have millions of dollars invested in. I want something where everyone's working together, and we're either going to have good information and make good decisions, or I don't understand what you're doing. So I want you to know that this is something that should be brought back, it should be something that's explored and evaluated, because there is no alternative. And there is nothing that is going to be in its place because it could never be reconstructed because of the way it's grandfathered in and because of the DEP regulations. There is value to it that isn't just value in terms of numbers, it's a long-range plan. And I, I think we would be remiss if I didn't say that this is Stone Harbor looking at every aspect, looking at business, looking at service, looking at tourism. This is what our community's about, this is what the numbers run on. So I would hope that everybody would say, "You know what? Maybe we acted too quickly. Maybe we should let all the people in this room have their opportunity to say, 'You know what? We said this was bad, and you shouldn't do it, and we've proved you right.'" Fine, so then we don't do it. Or the other people who say, "We really want to do this, not just because it's a historical site, because it's something that can't be replicated." So I think that there's the analysis beyond the notice and opportunity that was totally missed, which as an attorney blows my mind, but that's besides the point. I think that we need to look at this and explore it so that when people turn around 50 years from now and they say, "Why didn't that happen?", we have a clear record.
Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council?
Jonathan Lucos, 353-90 Third Street. In the interest of full disclosure, I should let everybody know that I am a current borough employee. Regardless of where you stand on the issue, whether you're for it or against it, this is not how government should work. If everybody here that voted to kill this was so sure of themselves and the footing that they were on, why didn't you put it on the agenda and give people an opportunity to speak? This is what happens when we have routine elections where people run completely unopposed, where we have people that are constantly put on this board that were actually not elected by anybody. I just wish that, I can't get involved. Federal law prohibits me. I've been asked multiple times to run for council. I have. And there will come a time, I promise you, when I will do it. But we just can't do this. I think we need to do more, we need to get involved. Again, regardless of what side of the issue you are on, run for council, have honest elections where you're. Have honest elections where your vote actually counts because as it sits right now, whoever's available. And I think this is what happens. I think that people feel emboldened to just make the decisions whatever they want because they know they will not be challenged at the ballot box, and we need to do that. And that being said, I think that council should explore making it easier for people to be on council. I don't see why such a small town needs two meetings a month. I resided in a community of 50,000 residents, 10 square miles. They were able to get everything done in one month. I also think that these meetings should be moved outside of work hours. Have them at night so the folks that are still working, that do work those nine to fives like myself, can go, you know what, I don't have to take time off from work to be involved in my government. Again, it's not about what side of the issue is on. I, I get it. There's pros and cons both sides. I totally understand that. But it just felt very backhanded, and I, I just, I felt like no one cared about, it was way more people are for this than are against it, from what I saw at that meeting. And it just, it was upsetting to me. So I, I just want people to get involved, and I think if people do get involved, maybe these types of things won't happen at the last minute or in the middle of the night and things of that nature. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to address mayor and council? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Ordinance 1557.
Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1557 to be taken up on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1557 on second reading?
Ordinance 1557 authorizing the execution of an agreement of sale to purchase 230 94th Street.
This is the property for the soda pump station.
The public hearing on ordinance 1557 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Mayor and Council, I move the 1557 to be passed on second reading and advanced to third and final reading.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1557 on third and final reading?
To authorize the execution of an agreement of sale to purchase 230 94th Street.
Mayor and Council, I move the ordinance 1557 to be passed on a third and final reading, adopted, and published according to law.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
I need a motion approving two new firemen, Sean Krueger and Levin Oakley.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no items on the agenda for discussion. May I have a motion approving the bill list?
I offer a motion to approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers are properly endorsed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go into private session. We'd appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back in the public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session, which is simply adjourned. It is also.
Madam Mayor, before we do so, I'd like to bring up a motion. I'd like to make a motion. There's been considerable discussion in the interim since last meeting from the public and on social media and just general discussion in the borough regarding Smugglers Cove. I'd like to make a motion that council reengage negotiations to consider the purchase of Smugglers Cove. And I'd like to see if any of that has changed on the composure of this council as to their prior vote, given recent events. I think it's worth pursuing another vote just to be sure no one's mind has been changed.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
That council reengage in negotiations and exploration to purchase Smugglers Cove in whole or in part.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Daleahan?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
No.
Motion does not carry.
However, that was not on the agenda, just as the last one wasn't.
Exactly.
And there was quite a.
You know, honest, I, I get it.